Coming down, if you could, please join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everybody. Could we have a sunshine announcement? Please, Cam.
All right, good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, January 9th, 2024. This is a Jersey City Planning Board meeting with a scheduled 5:30 PM start time. And in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting has been given to the editor of the Jersey Journal, the Jersey City Reporter, and posted with the city clerk on January 5th of 2024. This meeting was also posted on the Jersey City Division of City Planning webpage, and all distribution materials made available to the board were published and available to the public.
All right, thank you. Cam, could we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
Here.
Commissioner Gungadin.
Here.
Commissioner Cruz.
Here.
Commissioner Torres.
Here.
And Chairman Langston.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. Five commissioners are present.
Thank you. Bridget, could we swear in the staff, please?
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. All right, thank you. Cam, do we have correspondence?
Yes, Chairman, we have quite a lot of correspondence, so give me a minute here, one second.
We're all getting used to it, Cam.
Yeah, so, all right, here we go. Okay, so we have eight items requesting to carry tonight, starting with two who are requesting to carry to a date uncertain, and they will be re-noticing. So that is item 16 on your agenda, case P-22-227, preliminary and final major site plan with variances, 605 to 607 Grove Street. They will be re-noticing, carried to a date uncertain.
If they're carried, they're going to re-notice.
All right, they are just re-noticing. And next one that will also just be re-noticing is item 24 on the agenda, case P-22-187. It is a preliminary and final major site plan with variances, address is 191 to 193 Academy Street, and they will be re-noticing. Now, to the carries with preservation of notice, and that would be to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is January 23rd of this year. And it starts with item 21 on the agenda, and that is case P-2023-0069. That is for preliminary and final major site plan amendment, and the address is 180 10th Street, 543.5 Manila Avenue, and 545 Manila Avenue. Again, so that's item 21. And then item 22, case P-2023-0070. It's a preliminary and final major site plan amendment, address is 204 10th Street, 543.5 Manila Avenue, and 545 Manila Avenue. All right, and moving on, item 23, that is case P-23-092. It's a preliminary and final major site plan, address is 612 to 616 Communipaw Avenue. They have requested to carry with preservation of notice to January 23rd. We're going to continue on this chronological theme for carries as we go to item 25, case P-23-039. It's a conditional use, address is 746 Grand Street, requesting to carry with preservation of notice to January 23rd. Item 26 on the agenda, it's case P-22-189, preliminary and final major site plan with variances, address is 216 Palisade Avenue, requesting to carry with preservation of notice to January 23rd. And then lastly, item 27 on the agenda, it's one of these new lovely case numbers, P-2023-0044, preliminary and major site plan, and it is addressed 35 Fairview Avenue, and they've requested to be carried with preservation of notice to January 23rd of this year.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you, Cam. And just for everybody's notice, we do plan on cutting this meeting a little short tonight considering the weather. I think it's appropriate, given the state of emergency from the governor. So, that being said, let's get into old business. We're carrying also case P-22-140 as a preliminary and final major site plan for 152 Ogden Avenue. That's being carried to January 23rd with preservation of notice. Mr. Lee, do you have anything, any update? Or Mr. Harrington, actually, you're listed on it. Any update on 152 Ogden?
Yeah, we're going to be prepared to move on the 23rd if the word is ready.
Great, okay, thank you. All right, so let's get into new business, the review and discussion of Gadham Venkatesh as a certified artist. Formal action may be taken.
Okay, so, as we do with these artist certifications, I just will reiterate that they meet the criteria established by the Artist Certification Board for being a certified artist, specifically, criteria 1, 2, 3, and 4. They have a very impressive portfolio, including a Guinness World Record for the smallest sculpture, and staff recommends approval in certifying this artist.
Okay, thanks, Cam. Commissioners, any questions? Okay, is there anybody here from the public that wants to comment? Anybody from the public?
Mr. Chair, seeing no public, I move to close the public.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded, public is closed. Cam, we have your recommendation?
Yes, staff recommends approval.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the review and discussion of Gadham Venkatesh as a certified artist, and forward to City Hall for formal adoption.
Second.
Okay, wave a motion and a second for approval?
All right, Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
Congratulations, I.
Commissioner Gungadin.
Congratulations, I.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Congratulations, I vote aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Congratulations, best of luck. I vote aye.
All right, motion carries. All in favor?
Also, for the record, we have the sunshine announcement to mark into evidence.
One moment, this will be be one in evidence for tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Bridget. Can everybody hear us? These are amazing times, aren't they? We can hear each other finally, man. All right, let's move on to item 10 on the agenda, case P-2023-0030. This is a preliminary and final major subdivision for 145 Ganjemi Drive, 396 Maron Boulevard, and 125 Provost Street.
Chairman, I do have to recuse on case P-202330, as well as 31, 32, 33. I have a conflict that does not allow me to advise the board on the matter, as has happened in the past. It's up to the chair if the board would like to proceed without representation. And with that, Chairman, I will step off the dais.
All right, thank you, counsel. Mr. Vertebello, you've proceeded without Santo's wonderful counsel before. I feel comfortable moving on tonight at any moment. If we need to consult with outside counsel, we reserve that right, and we'll carry you to a different date with, you know, preservation of notice.
Understood, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Floor is yours, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Robert Vertebello from the law firm of Conne Foley. Just as a preliminary matter, this item, which is case number 10, is also in conjunction with items 11, 12, and 13. What we will do, if the board is receptive to that, is we have one presentation. What's going on here is, and you'll hear from our experts this evening, is this is a subdivision, a land swap, and a site plan amendment for the new Shop Right site. We were here or on Zoom about a year ago. There are some tweaks to the site plan amendment, but we also were able to complete the land swap, which will complete the street grid. So, we're going to do all four cases as one presentation, if that's okay.
Sure. And with that being said, of course, we'll separate the votes. I'd also like to call item 11 is case P-2023-0031. That's a final major site plan amendment. Once again, that's for 99 Provost Street. Item 12 is case P-2023-0032. That's a preliminary and final major site plan for 145 Ganjemi Drive. And also, item 13 is case P-2023-0033. That's a preliminary and final major site plan for 145 Ganjemi Drive and 125 Provost Street.
And one last technical note. These are, all four are notice cases. We did submit, and they've been uploaded, the affidavit, proof of service in mailing. I also have hard copies of same this evening that we can mark if necessary.
Matt, you've reviewed the notice?
Yes, I have. Let me just confirm that it's the right package, just one moment. I'm just going to check the dates in the letter. It's at the back, okay. Okay, yeah, last one.
Staff reviewed these prior to coming here tonight, but the, looking at them right now, these are the packets that we reviewed. We can mark these in evidence for these four cases.
Okay, so let's mark them A1, and just to keep the record clean as possible, Bridget, maybe we'll just mark A1 on every case that I called?
May I suggest A1 through 4, because it's going to be one transcript?
Okay, we could do that. So let's mark A1 through 4.
And then...
That will be A1 through 4 in evidence.
And counsel, just going forward, anything we enter into an exhibit, let's, I'll test your math. You're going to have to have your four times down.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Well, we will have an A5, which is the presentation. That's on the screen right now. It's a PowerPoint presentation, so at the conclusion of the hearing, we'll submit a copy to staff as well.
But that's a presentation for all of the applications, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so we're going to have to mark those A5 through A8.
Okay. And I have a hard copy, if you want to keep track of it for now. This is the, if you want to hold on to that. This is a hard copy.
Okay, so this will be A5 in evidence, since it's one transcript. I think 4 is a transcript, so we only need A5, I guess. I'm sorry.
Okay, so A5 for the presentation. I'm corrected.
A5 in evidence.
Okay. Okay, and with that out of the way, good evening again, Robert Vertebello, on behalf of the law firm of Conne Foley, and on behalf of the applicant, on these four applications, P-202330, 31, 32, and 33. We're very excited to be here this evening, excited to be back in person as well. This is the continuing evolution of the Metro Plaza site, which is, I'm sure everyone knows, is the site that houses the current Shop Right and the BJ's. This whole area is being transformed into a new neighborhood with the new and enlarged Shop Right, which we had approval for last year, and we're maintaining that approval. We're now creating the street grid that's envisioned in the redevelopment plan. We were able to negotiate a land swap with the owner of the Wells Fargo Bank that allows for the creation of the street grid, which you'll see on the screen in front of you, and which we'll provide testimony of. Specifically, what's happening is the creation of the new Provost Street will intersect with 6th Street, Thomas Ganjemi Drive, and we'll provide, our experts will provide testimony as far as the details of that during the presentation. Not only are we creating the new street grid, but we've also created cohesive, publicly accessible open space, as also envisioned in the redevelopment plan, specifically Development Block 3, which is where the new Shop Right will go. You know, abuts and connects to what's referred to in the redevelopment plan as Development Block 7B, which we also refer to as the Embankment Plaza. And in working closely with the planning staff and with neighborhood groups, specifically the Embankment Coalition, we're delivering a park, the Embankment Plaza, that will seamlessly integrate with the potential Embankment Park that the city is envisioning on the 6th Street Railroad Embankment. Overall, the development team has worked tirelessly on this project. This is a very comprehensive project. We've worked with members of the planning staff. There have been over 20 meetings with community groups, again, specifically the Embankment Plaza. We've also worked for two years with Newport on the land swap that we'll be discussing here this evening, which involves the existing Wells Fargo Bank. And, you know, we've been working to balance the needs of an enlarged Shop Right with accessible open space, along with the creation of the desired street grid, and all the other requirements that are set forth in the redevelopment plan. We've also worked closely with the Division of City Planning and various agencies, such as the JCMUA, to lay the foundation and framework for making this neighborhood an integral part of downtown Jersey City, as opposed to a standalone mall, which it currently is. These applications that are here this evening, they're all in conformity with the Harzmas Cove Station redevelopment plan. There are some minor variances when it comes to signage with Wells Fargo that we'll discuss this evening, but the overall scope of the work is in conformity with the redevelopment plan. There's also a minor variance that we'll discuss with the site plan amendment on some of the facade materials that are being changed, but we'll provide testimony as to the whys and wherefores of that. As noted on the agenda, there are, item, we'll call it P-2023-30, that's actually for the subdivision. So effectively, what's happening is we're taking the existing Wells Fargo site, which is an irregular parcel that runs along Ganjemi Drive, and we're effectively splitting it in two, to an east portion and a west portion. The east portion will continue to house the bank, and the west portion will house the Embankment Plaza. You'll hear testimony from our experts this evening, as far as the details of that. Item 31 is the site plan amendment for the existing building that was approved last year that will house the new Shop Right. Like I said, there are amendments that are triggered as a result of this. The main one being, if you have a recollection of last year, we had like a teardrop driveway that's now being replaced by the street grid that's on the screen in front of you. Item 32 is the site plan for the Embankment Plaza, otherwise known in the redevelopment plan as Open Space A on Development Block 7B, and we'll provide the details of that, our experts will. And item 33 is the site plan with regards to the resulting reconfiguration of the Wells Fargo site. Again, emphasis being, the bank building itself isn't changing, drive-through lanes aren't changing, but access to the site is changing because of the extension of Provost Street and the intersection with Ganjemi Drive. So there are changes physically that result to the site as a result of that. And with that, I have our full development team here this evening, Gabrielle Gornelli from Dresden Robyn, Maxwell Pow from BBB Architects, and Andrew Kridlin from OJB, our landscaping team. And if there are no questions as far as any of that, which I know was quite a bit of an intro, I'll turn it over to our experts.
All right, thank you, counsel.
Okay, our first expert, or our first witness this evening is Gabrielle Gornelli from Dresden Robyn. Yeah, yeah, you'll just press the down arrow.
Did you raise your right hand and be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please state and spell your full name for the record.
My name is Gabrielle Gornelli, G-A-B-R-I-E-L-L-E. Gornelli is G-O-R, N is Nancy, E-L-L-I.
Thank you.
Ms. Gornelli, good evening. It's good to see you in person. We've qualified you in the past, and if your license is current tonight?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, you're qualified.
Okay.
Ms. Gornelli, if you could just take the board through the site plan presentation this evening?
Sure. Okay, so what's on the screen is a diagram from the redevelopment plan. This is showing the configuration that these site plans are proposing. You have Block 3 on the west. That's the tower and the Shop Right lot. Block 7B, which I will refer to as the Embankment Plaza lot, and Block 7A, which we will show Wells Fargo in a reconfiguration. We're also showing, as Robert mentioned, the extension of Provost Street to Thomas Ganjemi Drive to the north, and the extension of 4th Street on the south part of the development to connect to Maron Boulevard. So first, we're going to go through the subdivision to set the stage for the rest of the development. Here on the screen, it's the major subdivision plan that was submitted to the Division of City Planning. Primarily, this subdivision is focusing on the existing Lot 2, which is the Wells Fargo parcel, and the existing Lot 47.02, which is the lot to the south. The subdivision will include subdividing the Wells Fargo lot into two parcels, Lot 2.01 to the east, and Lot 2.02 to the west. 2.01 is the redevelopment parcel 7A. That's where the Wells Fargo lot, Wells, the reconfigured Wells Fargo will be. That's where the Wells Fargo building currently is, and we'll reconfigure the parking lot. Proposed Lot 2.02 is where the Embankment Plaza will be. And then, the changes associated with the existing Lot 42.03, we're, 42.02, excuse me, we're subdividing that into 47.03 and 47.04, and that's just to set the stage for a future phase of development. There is no development proposed on this parcel with these applications. If there's no questions on the subdivisions, I would move into the amended site plan.
Okay, any questions for the subdivisions? Anyone? Okay, thank you, go ahead.
So what's on the screen now is our civil sheet, C-300. This is our overall site plan of the Hudson Exchange redevelopment area. This is just similar to the diagrammatic view that was shown before. It's just showing the redevelopment Lot 3, where the tower and Shop Right is, the Embankment parcel lot, and the reconfigured Wells Fargo. I'll flip to our 301 sheet, which is a zoomed-in version of this. So here is our civil sheet, C-301. It's our site plan sheet. This is just a zoomed-in version of C-300. The bulk of the changes associated with the amended site plan from a site civil perspective are in the northeast corner of the site, where Provost Street is connecting to Ganjemi Drive. Previously, prior to the land swap and the inclusion of the Wells Fargo lot, we had shown a cul-de-sac at the northern end of the development lot. So Provost Street did not connect through to Ganjemi. So we are now proposing a connection to Ganjemi, a full intersection there. We've coordinated with the city on this, and we are showing a traffic light here. Where, there's another traffic engineer who's working on the intersection there. And part of this roadway extension, we're also doing crosswalk improvements. We're extending the two-way bike lane on the east side of Provost Street that we previously were showing with the prior approval, which ended at our cul-de-sac. So we're extending that to the intersection. And then, another minor change, as part of the amended site plan, is on the west side of Provost Street, we are showing a dog run, which was at the request of city planning. And then this plan also shows, in great out, it shows the Embankment Plaza to the north, and it shows the Wells Fargo to the east, which we will get into a little bit later. That's the end of the civil testimony and the amended site plan. The landscape architect will speak more about the landscape changes before we get into Wells Fargo.
Yeah, so I'll call Ms. Gornelli back after some of our other experts did take the board through the resulting Wells Fargo parcel. So if there are no questions at this stage for Ms. Gornelli, I'll bring up my next witness.
I have one quick one. I don't know if, maybe this falls under traffic, the protected bike lanes going north. So I see the parking where it's protected, that section right there. What's protecting that lane? Are there jersey barriers intended to be installed?
The bike lane is actually up at sidewalk level. So we have a small curb island on the west side of the bike lane, and the bike lane is up at sidewalk level, adjacent to the sidewalk.
Okay, what prevents, I'll say it as a biker, what prevents pedestrians from walking into the bike lane? But we know the problem is bikers on the sidewalk.
Right. We can work with the board or city planning to figure out any solutions there. I believe putting this up at sidewalk level was at a request of the city during the initial approval.
Okay.
But yeah, I think we're open to working with the city to figuring out the best way.
Yeah, we need some kind of separation there, obviously.
There's actually one other thing I forgot to mention. Just briefly, I wanted to touch base on the utilities. We are, previously, we were showing utility builds out, building out through 4th Street and Provost Street. We are extending our utilities through to the intersection at Thomas Ganjemi, and we've been working extensively with JCMUA on the utility plan here.
Okay, any other questions?
I have a question then. On the last part that you just said, though, extending the utilities to Thomas Ganjemi Drive over there, and on what Chairman Langston, jumping on what Chairman Langston was speaking about, is there going to be any of that utilities preventing people from walking into, happen to walk into bike lanes or into streets because of those are there? Or, when you work it out, it'll be enough walk space for the people in that corner to have to walk through there, pedestrian walkway?
So the utilities, and I apologize if I misunderstood the question, but the utilities are proposed within the roadway portion?
Roadway portion, okay. I thought you said something was going on the sidewalk portion?
No, not in the sidewalk, all in the roadway.
Okay, okay.
And are they going to be underground?
Underground utilities, yes.
And it's underground?
Yep.
Now, it's going on to the sidewalk portion underground?
It's not going on to the sidewalk portion, no. These are just, the sanit, the storm and the water mains in Provost Street will be connecting to the storm and the water mains in Thomas Ganjemi Drive.
Understood, thank you.
And counsel, I am going to ask for, I just want to get it out in the open now. I am going to ask for some kind of a condition that you work with staff on some kind of delineation between pedestrian area and cycle area.
That's not a problem. We're still working through, I think, some of the traffic issues as well with both city engineering and city traffic engineering.
Okay, great. All right, thank you, Ms. Gornelli.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next witness will be Andrew Kridlin from OJB.
Did you raise your right hand and be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please state and spell your full name for the record.
Andrew Kridlin, A-N-D-R-E-W-C-R-I-D-L-I-N.
Now, Mr. Kridlin, you're licensed... Now, Mr. Kridlin, you're licensed landscape architect, is that correct?
That is not correct.
Oh, that's not correct, I'm sorry.
I'm a fact witness.
I understand, but you have a license in another jurisdiction.
I do not, no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Well, the point I was trying to make is that we're presenting Mr. Kridlin as a fact expert or a fact witness about our landscaping here this evening.
Just for the board's notice, this is not expert testimony. This is opinion. It's fact-based opinion, but it's still opinion, okay? All right. Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
Awesome. So just as Gabby had mentioned previously, with the extension of a Provo Street through, that's created a little bit of a larger open space along Provo Street. So we have brought that kind of public dog park component as well as kind of connecting the garage entrance perpendicular to Provo Street there. And then, as previously mentioned, created the larger kind of north embankment open space in the area north of the building as well. So just going to talk quickly about kind of the landscape condition here. So we've worked in coordination with the embankment coalition to kind of bring a lot of the ideas of the embankment in through this landscape as part of kind of those coordination efforts. And so this includes permeable paving through with a seven-foot kind of shared bike path that does connect to the bike lane on Provo Street. We've created a six-and-a-half-foot sidewalk along the north side, along Thomas Ganjemi Drive. And then we've included a ton of landscape within this area. Trees, native plantings, kind of pulling from those native ideas of the embankment and bringing those down into this, kind of creating those into native natural assemblages. The northwest corner, adjacent to the project's art vitrine and the retail space, we've created a permeable paving plaza here that'll house, you know, opportunities for seating and public kind of engagement there on the corner. You know, we have several trees in this area as well, kind of bringing, again, those connections and then connecting the sidewalk and that bike lane to, sorry, I'm misremembering the name of the drive there.
Ganjemi.
Yeah, no, Maron Boulevard there on the left-hand side. So those are the main kind of updates in the site plan amendment for the landscape component. Any questions?
That's it?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. Any questions? Anybody? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Awesome. Okay, thank you. Our next witness will be Maxwell Pow, the project architect.
Could you raise your right hand and be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And if you can state and spell your full name for the record.
Maxwell Pow, first name M-A-X-W-E-L-L, last name Pow, P-A-U.
Thank you.
Mr. Pow, good evening. Good to see you in person as well. I'm going to be saying that a lot over the next few months. Your license is current tonight in the state of New Jersey? Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Great, thank you. And it is a pleasure to be here tonight as well. So we'll start with just sort of zooming back into the site itself. On the screen is SP 002 and just reorienting ourselves, of course. This is the site. The tower is located on the southeast corner, Maron Boulevard on the left. And then, of course, we're showing Provost extending through over to Thomas Ganjemi Drive. Just want to note that there are no changes to the building's overall footprint, density, height or massing from the previously approved scheme. The minor modifications that we are proposing in this amendment relate to some changes to facade materials, refinement of louvers and their placement on that facade with ongoing coordination with ShopRite and utilities, and refinements to the landscape design on the building's sixth floor, which is actually shown on this roof plan. So it's sort of some minor refinements of sort of configuration and furniture placement, but it's this...
Sorry, could you slow down and just speak up?
Sure, sure. Sorry, I get this all the time, speak too fast. So the changes on the roof of the sixth floor, which is, you know, intended for the residence's use. It still has a green roof over the parking on the north. It has a landscaped area just north of the tower and then an outdoor landscape deck with a pool on the southwest corner, which is similar to the previously approved plans. So moving on to SP 310, these are the four elevations of the building. Again, there are no substantive changes to the architectural design relating to building massing, architectural approach or the look and feel of the building. These elevations will appear visually very, very similar to what has previously been approved, which includes, of course, the glass and metal tower up above the podium as well as the podium itself, which has sort of three main components, right? So the first component is the bronze screen that you sort of see on these three facades, which screens the parking garage as well as ShopRite. The clear glazing at the ground level, which, you know, provides visual and access into the stores, the lobbies and so forth on the ground floor. And then the third component, which is sort of this neutral gray that you see on the east elevation, north elevation and the west elevation, which is sort of that, the component that's enclosing the ShopRite loading, which takes up a big portion of that ground floor of the building. So what we're proposing to do is to actually modify the material of the neutral gray that you see here, right here where I'm highlighting, from an open joint exposed fastener high-pressure laminate system, which is previously approved, to a continuous stow power wall system. But what we're going to do is we've selected a texture and a paint that matches the color as well as we are proposing to introduce reveal joints that matches the panelized look that was previously approved. So for all intents and purposes, we're trying to keep the same look with a different material at the base. And again, that's limited to the portions here in gray.
Mr. Pow, this isn't a spray foam type of material, correct?
It's an applied stucco product on top of, you know, insulation and then the backup wall, which in this case is CMU on the ground floor and the metal studs up on the second floor.
Okay, but it's not an EPHIS material?
It is an EPHIS material. It's a two-coat EPHIS product.
Okay. So one condition we always put on any EPHIS product that's installed, that the cutting of the foam is an interior job, not an exterior job. It doesn't happen on the building. It's cut indoors. The foam is controlled. The garbage blowing around is controlled inside the site. It doesn't exit the site into the neighborhood. And Matt, anything else? EPHIS is permitted in this neighborhood?
I believe they're going to put on some testimony regarding that material.
Yes, so that's one of the variances that we're asking for as part of the site plan amendment is since this is technically an EPHIS product, we're asking because of the nature of what's being proposed for a deviation on this because of the specific nature. Max, if you could take the board through, you know, what the product is and sort of the rationale behind the change?
Yeah. So we had submitted as part of the package a sample of the product. I'm not sure if it made it to the board or not, but it actually, in terms of the look and feel, it's very similar to what we had previously proposed. And one of the reasons why we decided to make this switch is that we had a concern with what we had originally proposed for the longevity and the maintenance of the panelized system. So it's sort of, what we had proposed was a Trespa-type system, was a cementitious board. And the concern we had was over time, if those panels got dinged or damaged, it's not repairable, right? So over time, we might have an issue of finding replacement panels that would match what's already there. So we wanted to find a product that, you know, could be patched, could be fixed, could be repainted. So that's really more of an issue of sort of long-term maintenance. The other concern we actually had as well was the previously approved panels had open joints. And again, over time, we're a little bit concerned about, you know, what might get stuck in those joints and so forth. So we just thought, let's just go with a product that we've used on other projects that works very well, that can be repaired and has, you know, a closed system. It's a reveal joint, you know, nothing can get through it. And that's what we're proposing here.
But there is drainage behind the base layer, I'll call it.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, there's drainage, there's the insulation board, you know, it's a whole system, essentially.
Okay, understood. Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
And then I think the other element here, as I mentioned previously, was some of the louvers that you'll see here got sort of adjusted, again, in coordination with the utilities and ShopRite. And then my final slide here is SP 311, which is just a blow-up, one of our blow-up sheets that show all of the materials. So the only material here that we're calling out as a modification is number 16 right here, which is reflecting the stow power wall system in here. I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have. Pass it back to Robert.
No, I have none. Anybody else?
I do have a question. On this product that you're changing because of the longevity and stuff, none of it is in a walking area, though, right? It's all on the, what I see is on the, we're looking at the second floor and above only?
It's on the first, and I'll go back one. So on the east elevation of Provost, there is a little bit right by the parking entrance.
On the park, where people are going to be walking and stuff like that, so.
Yeah. On the north, it's there as well, but we've got landscape, you know, buffering. And then on Maron Boulevard, there, again, there's a little bit right there, right up to about this point here.
I'm more concerned are the lower areas where there'll be a lot of trafficants and traffic going into the ShopRite and stuff like that, where it's going to cause that product to have more damage. I'm pretty sure repair work is not going to happen immediately. Are we going to have like areas where you can see the stucco being dented, crushed and stuff like that because of the styrofoam insulation that it has?
Yeah, so the ShopRite entrance is actually in a location, the opposite corner, which doesn't have any of the stucco. You know, I think one of the things about, you know, one of the reasons why we chose this product is that we do have CMU as our ground floor, a concrete masonry block as the backup wall on the ground floor all the way up to the second floor. So it's a sturdy material there.
That's the back of it.
Is that correct?
Yeah, it's not the front of it, where the part that we're going to see damaged, yeah? I'm pretty sure the back of it's not going to get damaged. Is there any other type of foams that more dense that you could use for that product that is not easily impacted?
I mean, it's...
I know there's all type of styrofoams. We use them on certain construction sites for landfill, right? They fill up a hole and they pour concrete on top. It's, does that product give you that option of uses something more dense? That it would be less chance of being damaged?
I think I'll have to research that, but it is used with a rigid insulation panel, right? So it's not the soft foam that's being used. It's a rigid insulation product that is the, you know, the backup essentially for the stucco.
But you did testify that it does get damaged and that's why you're using it, because you could exchange it, replace it and patch it, you know? That's why I'm bringing it up, because you claim that that's the reason why you're changing to this product.
Yes, and, you know, every material, you know, has the potential for it to be damaged. And I think for us, we really just wanted to be able to repair it easily over time, right? If it's, you know, I'm more worried, you know, about 10 years from now and, you know, a panel gets damaged, we can't find one that looks like it. Now all of a sudden you have a sore thumb sticking out because that panel doesn't match.
Yeah, because my concern is basically, this is going to be, I grew up in that neighborhood, so I'm looking at the back of the building, ShopRite's on the other end of the building, right? There is a walkway there. People are going to be passing that section up. And we have property across the street. We have Sixth Street on the other side. When it does get damaged, when things get thrown back there, does it take a long time to be repaired? Does it take, then it becomes an eyesore because it is the entrance into that area, you know? The... I understand the product, longevity of the other product not being, that would look terrible if you had to replace it with different colors or different material. That wouldn't look good either, but I'm just hoping that there's something stronger that you could use that is not subject to... Your selling point, your selling point is that we could paint it and repair it right away. I'm hoping we could use something that we don't have to paint and repair. That's what I said.
So to follow up on Commissioner Torres, if that panel does get damaged, what is the foam underneath it? Is it the pebble foam?
No, it's a rigid insulation.
Okay, okay. So there's no pebbling that's going to spread across the entire neighborhood? This is a rigid foam. It's a solid piece, I should say.
That's good, that's good. So I could deal with that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
At this point, we'll call Gabrielle Gornelli, or we'll recall Gabrielle Gornelli to take the board through the resulting orientation of the Wells Fargo site.
Do I have to re-swear in?
No.
Uh, no, you've already been sworn. And if you could just state that you understand that you're still under oath tonight and are still qualified?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so what's on the screen now, we're going through the Wells Fargo reconfiguration site plan. This is the C-301 sheet from the civil drawing set. Wells Fargo's on the east side of the property. So previously, as was mentioned before, the Wells Fargo lot extended across Ganjemi from Maron Boulevard. That portion is now the embankment plaza. And we have reconfigured Wells Fargo to be a rectangular shape further to the south. So the primary changes on the Wells Fargo lot are the reconfiguration of the parking areas, the relocation of the entrance, which previously you entered this site from Thomas Ganjemi, essentially where our proposed intersection is. Now you'll be entering from Provo Street. So we have a curb cut on our Provo Street sidewalk. The exit, which goes out to Ganjemi on the east side of the building, is going to remain. The parking spaces have been reconfigured into the new rectangular shape. The drive-through remains in the same location. And we took this opportunity to replace the dumpster enclosure that previously was on the site. We're going to put in a nice one there that's going to match the facade of the building. And then there's some changes to the signage where, just related to the new parking arrangement and the new entrance, some new wayfinding signage related to the new entrance. And then I have here the L-601 sheet from the civil drawing, the landscape plan. This is just showing that we're going to be putting a landscape buffer around the new parking and some shrubs along the streets and four trees in that landscape buffer. So pretty minor. And that's all I had.
Okay, I have no questions. Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our witness testimony. So at this point, that ends our presentation in chief. We'll turn it over to the board and the public.
Okay, thank you, counsel. I'm going to open it up for public, but I'll offer you the opportunity to have a closing statement after that, if you'd wish.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so at this point, public is open. If anybody from the public wants to comment, please, I was going to say raise your hand. Please come on up to the microphone. And that's it. Just come up to the microphone. Amazing.
Good evening.
Good evening. Let's just get you sworn in.
Could you raise your right hand and be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And please state and spell your full name for the record.
My name is Anne Villers, A-N-N-E, and my last name is V-I-L-L-E-R-S.
Ms. Villers, good evening. We have three minutes for you. It's a pleasure to see you.
Thank you. My concern is not so much with the design that we're looking at today, but it's the overall finished product that will happen. I'm in the neighborhood and so our concern for a lot of the neighborhood resident is to look at this in terms of the number, the density, the apartments that will be built with no plan whatsoever for a school that will house, even if it's only 10% of the residents who have children, we're looking at hundreds of children who will need to be schooled, who need somewhere to go. Right now, PS-16 is full and Cordero is also full, which are the two schools that are kind of corner of each other. And there's no plan for anything else. The other thing that the neighborhood does not have, we're one of the few neighborhoods in Jersey City that does not have a park with a playground or anything like that for recreation. So I was wondering if anywhere in these plans, somebody could come up with a park and maybe come up with some kind of a school for kids? I don't know.
Not that's in front of us tonight, ma'am. Nothing that's being proposed tonight has a school, has a park. This is strictly the redesign that we're talking about tonight.
So where will these children, even just the one building, the shop right building, which I don't know how many units will be included above shop right? There are enough children that will be there, nobody's planning for this, this is a real problem. Looks like nobody has an answer, thank you.
Again, that's not in front of us tonight. We, we can't demand a school during a, a street redesign essentially.
But nobody thinks about it and that's a real concern.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you.
Solid.
Hello.
Good evening.
Raise your right hand to be sworn. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you, and if you could state his full name for the record.
Katherine Moore, K-A-T-H-R-Y-N, M-O-O-R-E.
Ms. Moore, good evening.
Hello.
It's going to be interesting not seeing your apartment in the background, I'm going to miss it.
It's there, I'm there all day.
Okay, we have three minutes for you.
Okay, just, just a quick question, just so it's clear. The subdividing is just adding Provost Street continued to Sixth Street. Is, in the future, is the Wells Fargo going to be built into the redevelopment plan, into, into the whole plan? Or is it, this is just kind of a temporary fix to let that business continue to operate while the construction goes on around it? And that's best, that's pretty much the only question I have is just what, what is the future of that lot, that plot? Because on the overall plan, it shows a tower, but this is what that is now, that's it.
Certainly, the Wells Fargo site is part of the Harzmas Cove redevelopment plan area. So it does fit in, it is not a site that's controlled by the applicant or any affiliates of the applicants, controlled by Newport. Right now, there are no plans to develop the site. Eventually, it, it can be developed, it would have to be developed in accordance with the redevelopment plan.
Okay, thank you, counsel, anybody else from public? If you'd like to speak, come on up. We have a live in-person mic.
Mr. Chair, signal public, I move to close the public.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded, public is closed. Counsel, do you have a closing statement or?
I'll keep it very brief. Again, thank you for the time this evening and being the first presentation back live and in person. Again, we're excited by this, as you heard from our professional team this evening and from the introduction. We've put a lot of thought and care into, into this development. It is in accordance with the redevelopment plan. You know, we've satisfied, we believe we've satisfied the criteria necessary for the board to grant the approvals. Again, with the variances that we're requesting with regards to the, the facade material as testified to by our architectural expert. And as far as the signage on the Wells Fargo site, we think that, given the nature of the explanation, we would respectfully request that the board grant those requested deviations, thank you.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Matt, do you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, so we have four applications here. It's P 2023 dash 0030 through dash 0033. We've heard testimony on this, for shorthand, I'll call it subdivision application, the site plan amendment application, the open space site plan application and the resulting Wells Fargo site plan application. They've, they've addressed some of the variances through testimony. Counsel, was there testimony, you were going to be presenting on signage variances with regards to the Wells Fargo?
We believe that was done by Ms. Gornelli, just to explain.
Okay. Sorry if I, okay, sorry if I missed those. This, this is a, a series of applications that has a lot of moving parts. And the improvements to the large tower development that's going up are, are welcomed, certainly. One, they are looking to improve the traffic legalization and safety at Thomas Gangemi and Provost Street. And they've noted on their plans that they're going to continue to work with the Department of Infrastructure and City Planning staff. We've heard other conditions put on the record with regards to the bike lanes, further work. Regarding some of the, the public comments, this redevelopment plan also does include several other phases of redevelopment and will include other open spaces, some with programming that should lean towards active recreation. I think the chairman addressed school planning correctly, which is, is not the purview of this board, nor is it really the purview of, of the city planning office. We, we work and respond and try to get information to the Board of Ed and the state to, to do those activities. Did the council review the staff memos prepared on November 20th and November 21st respectively?
Yes, we reviewed the staff memos.
And were you also in receipt of the Division of Engineering staff memo dated November 28th, 2023?
Yes.
Did you have any objection to the conditions laid out in those memos?
Generally, no, however, there are some details that we're going through with both traffic engineering and the Division of Engineering. There seem to be some comments that are a little bit in conflict, so we just want to work through those. So I know one of the conditions is to comply. Our request would be, we, we want to, you know, work through these issues with engineering and traffic engineering to make sure there are no inconsistencies.
Is that in respect to all four applications or a specific one? Just the, the site plan amendment application?
Primarily with the site plan amendment application and with, primarily the site plan amendment because that includes the, the Provost Street extension.
Okay. Staff does no issue with amending that condition in the memo or on the record for them to address engineering conditions. Looking at this in altogether, staff recommends approval. The, the, the variances requested are, are not substantial and pose no detriment. They've put on extra conditions regarding any of the commissioner's concerns regarding the, the sto material. Staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you, Matt. And there's also the condition on the delineation of the bike path.
Yes.
Pedestrian sidewalk. And counsel, just for the record, that condition on the EFS, that's going to be a shall, not a should.
Understood.
Find out that there's, you know, something spilling into the neighborhood that shouldn't be there, I'll march a stop work order right across the street.
Understood.
All right, thank you.
Sir Chair, I'd like to make a motion, we're going to do these individually, separately. I'd like to make a motion to approve case P 2023 dash 0030. The preliminary and final major site subdivision is presented to the board here tonight with the conditions outlined.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval on item number 10.
Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries, all in favor?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve number 11, case P 2023 dash 0031 for final major site plan amendment as presented to the board here tonight.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded for approval.
Okay, with the motion approved as the conditions are stated on the record and in the memo. Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries, all in favor?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case number 12, case P 2023 dash 0032 for preliminary and final major site plan with the two conditions outlined before.
Second.
Motion made and seconded for approval.
Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries, all in favor?
And number, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve number 13 on our agenda, case number P 2023 dash 0033 for preliminary and final major site plan with deviations, I'm sorry, conditions outlined before.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded for approval.
Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries, all in favor?
Okay, thank you, counsel.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
We request the carry first. I don't. Actually, I do. Counsel, you have a request to carry?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Michael Higgins, Dr. Billy Chirami.
Come on up to the other podium here.
I'm here for 319, 321, Fourth Street. It's unfortunate, I understand that there's a emergency warning this evening. I wanted to present the first meeting of the year, but we'll request the carry to the next planning board meeting with preservation of notice.
Okay, thank you, so we're carrying to.
That's 17.
What is it, 23, January 23rd? Case number P 23 dash 075 with preservation of notice and hopefully we get the kinks worked out for you by then and.
Yep.
We'll start fresh.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so let's get back to item 14, it's case P 2023 0040. This is site plan amendment for 319 Fifth Street. Tanya, you're handling this or is this? Good evening, counsel.
Good evening, Eugene O'Connell appearing for the applicant.
Chairman, I also have a conflict on this matter, so I'll be stepping away from the dais.
Thanks, Santa, thanks for bringing food tonight, we appreciate it, we'll see you later. He's just going back for his food. Okay, so counsel, once again, going forward, we're losing our attorney, I'm comfortable moving forward for the time being. If at any time we feel like we need to consult with outside counsel, we reserve that right and we will, you know, reach out to an outside counsel, we'll carry you with preservation of notice if that's the case, but let's move forward.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, counsel, and it's good to see you also.
So this is pretty much a straightforward application. It is a site plan amendment. The prior site plan application for this case required them to rehabilitate this building and to preserve the facade, which had some historic elements to it. The applicant, when he designed the, the project, he designed it so that the way that the project was built, it could preserve the facade and the facade could remain being used. However, back in June of 2023, in the course of constructing the building, he removed the sheetrock from the back of the facade and saw that the facade had been completely compromised, rotted out and had a lot of termite damage. In the portal, we did submit photos of the facade in case any commissioners didn't see them, I have copies tonight, which I can mark. So if you would like to see.
Gee, I, did we mark in the notices? There's, there's notices on the portal, which I'm assuming means you.
This is a notice case, it was.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm sitting in for list, no, Liz is not here.
Have you?
No, I don't think so.
Apologies.
Yes, I do.
Sure, thank you, Bridgette. Tanya, have you reviewed the notice?
Um, I did not review the notice, I'm looking at now, looks like everything is here, the date, time. So everything looks fine, the affidavits are here.
Okay, so let's mark notice A1. Go ahead, counsel, sorry.
All right, thank you so much, Tanya. So if any of the commissioners would like, I have several copies of the pictures, I'll have them marked and we can give them out.
Does anybody want a paper copy?
Let me get one, he's got it there, I'll take one if you want. Does he need it?
You just put it down and we'll.
Okay, this packet will be A2 in evidence and if you could just.
It's on the portal. I think so, yeah, let me see if something on it, yeah.
That's okay, good.
Actually, this is.
I want paperless.
This, this ain't on.
10.
This is not on.
Okay, counsel, could you describe how many photos are in that submission?
There are 10 photos and, and they are of the property and the facade. And there are photos of the front of the facade, the rear and of the elements that are holding the facade up and.
And when are those photos, I'm sorry, when were those photos taken?
They were taken back in June of 2023 and they were submitted to the planning staff and historic staff back in June of 2023.
Now, my understanding is there's work that's been ongoing on the project after a stop work order?
No, after the stop work order, there was no work done, we stopped work completely. The stop work order was not issued until December of 2023.
Okay, so what is the current?
Situation.
Situation with the facade pertaining to the photos that were being given?
The facade is, only part of it is still there, the, the lower part of the facade is still there, but the two upper, two floors of the facade is removed.
When you say the lower part, you mean the brick?
Yeah, the brick, exactly, in this, by the stairs.
Okay, so commissioners, just so we're all on the same page here, the brick going down into the basement is still on the building. Any of the upper part is not on the building anymore. And that's down to studs, plywood, what is it at this point?
I think it's down to plywood and studs, yeah, and just the, the front, yeah, studs and plywood.
We have to, that's okay.
The front of the building has plywood over it, right? The front of the building has plywood all the way up. If I'm not mistaken, is it?
I can bring up the applicant to answer the question.
Sure. And just come on up, we'll swear you in before we get any testimony, sir.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, and if you could state his full name for the record.
My name is Patrick Gallagher, P-A-D-R-A-I-C-G-A-L-L-A-G-H-E-R.
Mr. Gallagher.
Patrick, P-A-T-R-I-C?
No, it's, it's actually Park, it's P-A-D-R-A-I-C. You're welcome. Yes.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
If you could, just walk us through the current state of the building?
Perfect, the state of the building, we removed the, the damaged facade pieces that we could and then we reframed it as it was. So we designed this whole building to keep the facade. So we built the building all the way around it and when we got to the facade, it was rotted. The main beam holding up those two floors was completely rotted. So, I mean, you can see those if you reference.
If you could try and.
Yeah, if you reference the photos. Two, three in the packet, you'll see extensive termite damage going through the whole main beam that holds up those two floors. So we removed the cornice because we wanted to keep the cornice because it was important to us to preserve the historic elements of the building. And, you know, we went through extensive work and work with Maggie to make sure. extensive work and work with Maggie to make sure that we kept that facade and the look of the neighborhood and matched everything, so, the building behind it is built to the exact plans, and then the facade just needed, pieces of it needed to be removed and reframed exactly as they are on the plans, so that we could continue work. So, unfortunately, you know, we had a stop work order because we went through the wrong channels, but we, nothing is different from the plans than, you know, the windows were replaced, and everything, all the measurements were taken exactly as the existing facade was built, so, the windows are the same, everything's the same, it's just that the materials behind it are new, and we're just looking to staff to tell us exactly what they would like us to put on the front, so we can make it look exactly like they would like it to.
Okay, so the gray brick you're not married to at this point?
The brick is the, is there.
The gray brick that's above the basement level?
Um, no, that was, above the basement level was originally...
The shingles.
Like a clabberd, and then it was, shingles put on at some point in nineties, and then it was redone in like the two thousand, so, I'm up to, you know, if Historic would like us to put clabbards back versus shake, I mean, we're open to that, I didn't do anything with that, because I'm leaving it up to them to tell us what they'd prefer.
Okay, so here's my issue with the entire look. If this wasn't an original historic building, and I saw the finished product that's on your site plan come in front of me, not a problem, not a problem at all. Given that, you know, there was a historic designation, Maggie, it was supposed to, so I'm on sheet, cover sheet A zero zero, so Historic wanted the photo on the top of that sheet to the right with the...
So the nineteen thirty-eight tax card photo on that plan set is, was to be used as a reference when they restored the front facade as part of their original site plan approval.
Okay.
And that reference is the base point for the plans, and of course, those plans were to be updated for any historic site evidence that was found that predated any of the items shown in that nineteen thirty-eight tax card photo.
Okay.
As is standard with preservation applications.
Okay, so forgive me, I know we've been through a million preservation applications at this point, um...
It's all good, that's why I'm here.
The terminology I have trouble with.
Yeah.
So what is the actual facade material?
So, on this application, the nineteen thirty-eight tax card photo showed the shake siding that is present on the photos that they provided tonight, however, it was my understanding that there was a horizontal lap underneath that, so your standard clapboard, and as long as that was present when they started to do the rehab, they were going to move forward with that.
Okay, so Mr. Gallagher, do they not make shake siding and clapboard anymore? Is that the issue?
They make both, right? It's just a matter of, the original building, when it was built, when we uncovered everything, there was clabbards behind the shake, right? The shake was put on, we know, after, because there's styrofoam insulation between the clabboard...
Sure.
And the shake, so we know that obviously styrofoam forming was invented in the eighties.
I mean, that's even a plus, though, because I just redid my apartment a year ago, and I found newspaper and a, an old Valentine can in the wall, that was our insulation in my apartment, but, um, I'm going to make this really short tonight, and I don't think the representation that's on A zero zero, all the way to the left, the gray siding, the gray paneling, I don't think that represents the historic nature that historic preservation was looking for here. Maggie, I don't want to put words in your mouth.
Well, I don't know if we want to finish their presentation and then get to staff comments, because I definitely have some, but unless you want me to go with it now, it's kind of up to you.
I'd like to hear the comments now, I don't want to drag the night out any further than we have to, we have a state of emergency in it.
Yeah, sure. So, the original application, which, and of course, like, as if we jump in at any point, we denied a determination of significance for this building in two thousand and nineteen, we denied it both because this section of the Italian Village neighborhood is mentioned in the phase one survey, also because it has historic integrity that's represented in that survey, it's all consistent, but at the time of their site plan application, this building was also in the R five, it's now RC three, but at the time it was an R five, and R five has a standard in there that says you can't demolish any building built prior to eighteen ninety without consent of the preservation staff, so, regardless of the status of determinations of significance, this building had at the time additional protections on top of it. We denied that determination, the applicant came to us, and they said this is the project we'd like to do, we'd like to restore the facade as part of that project, we signed off on them doing that and supported their site plan application, and then the applicant came to us seeking a demolition permit for, consistent with their site plan approval, when, just actually, this, I don't know if the board knows this, so when you guys work on a preservation project for Planning Board, and they come to me for a demolition permit, I only sign off on their permits based on the site plan that they submit, so when you come to me for a demolition permit, I need your Planning Board resolution, a copy of your signed site plan from your signature set, a copy of the demolition plan, and may make sure it's all consistent, and that's what they're approved off of, it's not me going back and reassessing significance or anything like that, so I looked at their site plan, looked at their approvals, confirmed that it matched, signed off on the demo permit. I do not have exact dates, I know that Liz has some documentation in the staff report, the applicant then proceeded to do a partial demolition, leaving the front facade, which is a wood facade, open to the elements for over a year. So this facade that was not structurally stable by June of twenty twenty-three, from what I can tell, was partially demolished sometime around May twenty twenty-two, and the wood facade was left open to the elements for over a year. While wood is certainly a good material, historic wood that has never been exposed to the elements before is going to degrade much faster, and I'm not saying the applicant had the intent of doing this, I'm just stating that the wood facade was left open to the elements for over a year, that is not something that we would recommend as preservationists, that's almost always going to lead to something being structurally unsound now or later. The applicant then contacted me, and in June of twenty twenty-three, said that the facade was unstable. While I'm certainly the point person for preservation stuff, I'm not the review planner on this application, so I forwarded the email to the review planner, said that the, they should probably contact the applicant, because based on previous actions of this board on similar applications, stuff like this requires a site plan amendment. The last time the board saw something like this, it was for eight twenty-four, eight twenty-six Pavonia, which was a similar scenario, where they came in wanting to preserve the facade and build a building behind it, they started their partial demo, realized that they would not be able to preserve the facade because the steel inside of the building was corroded, and they had nothing to tie the new building into. Staff went onsite, we reviewed the existing conditions with the architect, we reviewed it with their engineers, we reviewed it with not one, not two, not three, not four, but five contractors that they brought on site, all stating that they were not able to do the building, so, we went back to Planning Board, supported the facade coming down, acknowledging that the project was not able to be completed, that is how we've done this in the past, that is not how this, this project that we're looking at now was completed. They contacted me, I forwarded it to Mallory, saying they have to come in for a site plan amendment, the applicant was advised that they had to come in for a site plan amendment, and then the facade came down. I don't know the circumstances of the facade coming down, I'm not going to pretend to know the circumstances, I just know that when Mallory went out for a site visit in early August, the facade was no longer there, and we contacted the applicant and said, where's the facade? And now we are in a situation where they're asking us to, where we previously were in a scenario where we were going to be restoring a historic resource, we are now reconstructing a historic resource. The difference in that is quite large, right? The intention was to keep the historic materials, and now we are going to be recreating something out of frankly lesser modern materials, doesn't matter if there would or not frankly, the modern material is lesser. So, while I understand this is kind of a rock and a hard place scenario for the board, right, we, I didn't have any objections to the project as originally presented, I don't have any objections to the new component of the project now, aside from the fact that I don't think that we needed to be in this scenario today.
So the rock and the hard place is not the board's problem?
No.
We are not in the hard place?
No.
So counsel, I'm going to turn to you, Mr. Gallagher, I'll turn to you. I'm not satisfied, I don't want to speak for the rest of the board, I'm not satisfied with the new design of the facade. I think, given Historic's position and Historic's approval of the previous application, I think we should get as close as possible with Historic's blessing on this, and, you know, counsel, you alluded to this being a simple application, could it be more simpler than that? That's what we want.
I would like to address what Maggie had to say, just so I can put on the record what occurred between June of twenty twenty-three and December of twenty twenty-three. So, when, in June of twenty twenty-three, my client sent two emails to both Mallory Clark and Maggie, I think Tanya was involved too, showing the, having Jeff Jordan, our architect, give an opinion as to the condition of the facade and all the photos that were involved. At one point, it was decided that they may be able to do an administrative amendment, but as Maggie testified too, she felt the site plan amendment was appropriate. I was contacted to file the site plan amendment, which I did, in August seventeenth of twenty twenty-three, at, and I worked with Mallory Clark to get the plans done and get the site plan amendment filed. At the time, Mallory told me that she would expedite the hearing before the board, because she knew that no work could be done on the facade until it got to the board. Unfortunately, Mallory then received another employment, and I wasn't given another planner until sometime in Nov- I think October, August, maybe September, October, then it was finally handed over to Liz, Oper- Elizabeth Oper, who's my planner now, and all during that time, Maggie didn't even know that the new site plan amendment was filed, so she didn't get a chance to even look at it until November first, I think that was the first time she got the chance to look at it, and then she contacted me, and I contacted my client and Jeff Jordan, our architect, and Jeff changed the plans after talking to Maggie, so the plans would be more in tune as to what she wanted for the replaced facade, and as we have put in our application, whatever Maggie is looking for on this facade, to replicate what was removed, we, that's what we want to do. This is not a situation where an applicant or an owner thumbed his nose at the board or Historic or the planning staff. What he did was probably done inadvertently and mistakenly, and that's the truth, this is not, we tried to do everything we could do to comply with both planning staff and with Historic, and so, I agree with you, it should look like replication of the facade that was there, and that's what we want to do.
So counsel, it's never my intention to, to cause a client, you know, an applicant detriment. I want to see this building finished as much as anybody else in this room does, I just, I don't think, as I'm looking at that cover sheet, that that final design on the left side of that sheet pays any homage to the original design that was approved by Historic. So, Maggie, I'll ask you, are you satisfied with that finished design?
So I think there are certain changes that could be made, but substant- so, over, like, the overall substantial stuff, the changes that I would ask for are simply material changes. I do think that if the board wanted to approve the project tonight, we could do that with both the conditions in Liz's staff report, and then I also have conditions that, I wrote a memo, did not make it onto the portal, but I'm happy to read them into the record tonight and circulate the memo tomorrow.
So let me jump in real quick, I'm not happy going forward...
Okay.
Without seeing materials.
Okay.
Given the sensitive nature of the historic aspect here.
Right.
I want to see the finished materials before it's constructed, and again, I don't want to hold this project up, I just want to see it done right, that's it, bottom line.
All right, would I ask then that we could carry this to the twenty-third meeting, and by that time, we would have a chance to sit down and go with Maggie and get...
So to get, to get you on the twenty-third, we can carry the notice, but we would need revised drawings by Cam this Friday, to be sunshined?
Can I testify?
Swear Jeff Jordan for a minute?
Really quick, I want to clarify a point.
If, so, Bridget, give me one second, if we take any expert testimony, we have to open it up for public comment, we'll have a continuing record that will have to be opened up again and started from that point, I would rather not take any expert testimony, if you want to take a sidebar real quick, that's fine.
Hold on until they come back up, please, Eddie. Yeah. Hold the question until they come back up, let's get their answer.
Yeah, so I think what we originally said, let's carry this to the twenty-third, we'll try to get, if we don't get everything into Planning Staff and Maggie by Friday, then we'll have to get a new date, but that's, I think we'll agree to that, if that's possible.
Go ahead, Mr. Gallagher, you still under oath?
Which, just so we can clarify, which materials did you, like, I don't...
That's between you and Maggie to work out. Unfortunately, I don't design buildings, I wish I did, would make this job a lot easier, but that's between...
Okay.
The applicant and Maggie to work out before it gets to this board. If anything's changed, after the application comes back to us, and the plans are up on the web portal, we're carrying again.
Okay.
The plans need to be finalized when they get to the web portal and when they are sunshined.
Got it. So we didn't change anything?
Let me...
Yeah, go ahead. But we're going to change something, it sounds like.
We're going to agree to the proposal, that will come back on the twenty-third, have to get the plans in by Friday, I think that's fair, and we agree to it.
Tanya, I'll turn to you, are you comfortable with the twenty-third? I don't know what, I kind of know what the agenda looks like on the twenty-third right now.
Yeah, I, we can carry it, it's okay.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll deal with the rest of it, yeah.
Okay, anybody else from the board? Eddie, I know you had a question, if you want to hold it to the twenty-third, that's fine, unless you want to get it out.
Just a comment that I was going to make, so that we didn't... Actually, I'm going to put it out of record.
Okay.
Just as an other hurdle.
No, I turned it off, I turned it off on him before.
There you go, there you go, it's on now, okay. Just a comment that I was going to make, is I'm looking at the stairs being different than what was there previous, it looks like you extended the building out a little, the stairs are shorter, and I'm just hoping that that doesn't become an issue for you later on when it comes back again, right? So, just double check with everybody, making sure that that's not an issue, right, there's a different height in stairs.
Yeah, just to clarify for that, so the applicant was not proposing to change the stairs from the current condition, so, we weren't, they weren't required to match the nineteen thirty-eight photo.
Have to match, because they're not matching the...
No, they're not matching.
Shorter set of stairs than the other picture that I'm looking at, I just wanted to make sure that doesn't come back, and it had to be readjusted later on, that's all. Thank you. Chairman, for, let me take that moment.
Counsel, let's get it done. Motion to carry, please, and that's with preservation of notice?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion at this time to carry case P two zero two three dash zero zero four with preservation of notice to a date certain of January twenty-third.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to carry.
Okay, on the motion to carry, Vice Chair, sorry, Vice Chair Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Torres?
Aye.
Chairman Langston?
Aye.
All in favor.
Thank you, and...
Thank you very much.
Let's do it right, let's do it one time.
Okay.
All right, please, thank you, guys. Bridget, you want a break? Is five okay, given that we're going to get out of here at eight? Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break, everybody, once again, I know, Mr. McCann, you came in late, I do plan on cutting this thing off at eight o'clock tonight, there is a state of emergency in effect. It's getting bad out there. Okay, we can talk on the side. We can talk on the side. Okay, we'll be back in five at seven fifteen.